Thank you very much. I'm going to start the regular meeting of the City Council on this March 21st. And as we normally do, we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. And I'll have the city clerk announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Mamutika and Sri Nitya Gauri Barathananda of Nitya Nanda Vedic Temple. And the pledge will be led by Mayor Protemru.
Please stand.
A prayer for all things auspicious to happen in the city of Montclair, for all its citizens through the city hall. Thank you for this opportunity. Nitya Nandam Paramasukhadam Kevilam Nyanamurtim. Dvandvataitam Gaganasadrisham Tatvamasyadilaksham. Ekam Nityam Vimalamachalam Sarvadhisakshibootam. Bhavatitam Trigunarhitam Sadgurumtvam Namami. Lalate Tripunri Nitladritakasturi Tilakaha. Spuranmaladhara Spurtakatikau Pina Vasanaaha. Dadano Dushtharam Shirasipanirajam Shashikalam. Pradeepas Sarvesham Arunagiri Yogi Vijayate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very beautiful. Mayor Protemru.
When we look across our globe and we see a tremendous amount of the fragility of democracy, let us remember how fragile our own democracy can be and how strong we can make it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'm here.
Mayor Protemru?
Present.
Mayor Dutre?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is public comment. Before we get started there, I know that we probably have speakers regarding item number 10, which is under business items. So what I'm going to ask that if anybody wants to speak on a public comment, on any item that's not on the agenda or regarding a consent calendar item, this is now the time to do it. If you want to speak on agenda item number 10, then we will have a public comment on that portion of the agenda. So what I'm asking now is if you wish to discuss anything that's not on the agenda or it's a consent calendar item, now it's time to raise your hand on your electronic device if you wish to speak on a non-agenda item or consent calendar item, or if you wish to submit a blue card. So I'm going to have the city clerk announce those individuals. Looks like so far we have a Yvette Miranda on Zoom. And do we have anybody in the public here in the audience that wishes to speak on a none?
Yes, we do have two public comment cards for general. And also, we had an additional written comment submitted, an additional request to speak submitted.
Okay, so for this purpose right now, for public comments for non-agenda item and consent calendar item, I see two persons on Zoom right now, Bruce and Yvette. So those two will accept.
And both of those did request in advance.
Then I'll let you go ahead and lead off then.
Okay, so first is Bruce Colt.
Hello, Bruce. You there?
I am here. Good evening. Thank you very much. Just wanted to go ahead.
Did you have a consent calendar item to you to speak of or just a general item?
I will be speaking at public hearing item military and also item 10A.
Okay, all right.
XA.
Got it.
Okay, but for this portion, I just wanted to say I've been watching the progress on the Pacific Electric Bridge Trail. The old bridge has been removed. I want to just again express my appreciation to the city for handling that. I hear that possibly the new bridge might be installed this week, and I'm looking forward to that. I've been taking lots of pictures for history, and so those are always available. If anybody wants to see some pictures of the old bridge being removed and the new one installed, I'll have that. I just want to put my thoughts and prayers out to the people of Ukraine. They're the victims of the brutal regime of Russia. And also, the people of Russia that are, you know, in our country, we have a First Amendment right to speak out against our public, against our government, both federal, state, and local, as well as those officials, which I plan on doing tonight. Unfortunately, the people of Russia do not have such a right, and they are being imprisoned for speaking out against our government, against their government. And what a sad thought that is, that they can't do what many of us are going to do tonight. So I just wanted to put my thoughts to those people and have them in our prayers. They are victims, as well as the victims in our city staff today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Yvette Miranda, has her hand raised?
Okay, hello, Yvette. You there? Want to unmute yourself, Yvette? Again, Yvette, there we are. Can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, it's all yours. Go ahead.
Okay. Great, thank you. I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Yvette Fernandez Miranda. I am a member of the Safe Routes to School Committee, Community of Ontario, Montclair. And I'm speaking today to express my gratitude and appreciation for the improvements and changes in infrastructure to and surrounding the schools of the city of Montclair. As an active parent in the Ontario and Montclair School District and member of the Safe Routes to School Community of Ontario, Montclair, I see and hear about all the travesties affecting our children, the accidents and very unfortunate fatalities that rightly so bring down the emotional state of our community. I am delighted that some of the monies from the grant the city received will be spent on safe routes. Parents are very happy to see improvements and changes to keep their children safe. This is in due part to Ben Lopez's participation in bringing up the important matter of safety for our kids to the city council. Ben Lopez has also played an active role in the city of Montclair by bringing awareness and concerns to the community. He has also worked readily and eagerly with the Safe Routes to School Community of Ontario, Montclair Parent Group, also with parents in the city of Montclair who have played an active role in the advocacy of street safety for our kids. We anticipate continuing to work with Ben Lopez, Monica Areida, and looking forward to working with the rest of the city council members. Thank you for your attention.
Well, thank you, Yvette. And I just remind you that I think all five of us have taken this issue importance and actually allocated the funds. We've done the improvements here in the city of Montclair. And we're looking forward to all of our schools participating in safe streets here in Montclair and any organization to do so. So I'd be more than happy to talk to anybody, but again, this is a five-person team here to ensure our kids are safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Okay, and then we have our speaker cards for in the council chambers. First, we have Carolyn Raft.
Number 10, okay. To number 10.
That's also 10. Okay, so then in that case, I do have one written comment that was submitted that I can go ahead and read. This was from Elizabeth G. Valdez. And she says, "I thank all the representatives of the city of Montclair for the initiative. We are happy to see the change in infrastructure around the school that secures the lives of our children. We give thanks to the council member Ben Lopez, who has helped and supported the Committee of Safe Routes to School Community of Ontario, Montclair." And those are all the comments I've received.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. So we don't have any more public comments. Now we'll go down to public hearing. We have one item on the agenda. It's the second reading. This is the adoptive ordinance number 22-1000 regarding policy of use of military equipment by the Montclair Police Department. I don't think we have a need for a presentation on this. Am I asking for a presentation? So Chief, you're off the hook. Where are you, Chief? Okay, for the second time already, off the hook. So I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public hearing. Do we have any members in the public who would speak?
Yes, Bruce Colt did request to speak on this item, so.
Okay, is Bruce there?
I am here.
All right, it's all yours.
I just want to again provide my support for this item. I believe it's important that we understand the items that, and I think this is something that the police do on a regular basis anyway, is inventory their armaments so that they do not lose anything or misplace or have it, they keep it current accounting. So this is, again, I think in the best interest of the public at large, maybe not to the city itself, but I do believe that it provides a benefit. I noticed a comment I found funny last week that if a bad person got a hold of this list that caused harm, I don't know if that would be the case. I think it would be more the opposite. If I was a criminal, I saw how much armament, and I already know how many people are against me. Now I know what I'm up against with some equipment like this. I think I would probably deter crime, just like the Russians know how many nuclear warheads we have aimed at them, pretty much to stop World War III. So I think this is going to be good crime deterrent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring the item back. Is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the item as presented this evening.
Second? Okay, Mr. Lopez, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this initial comment is directed at the chief. I, based upon our conversation after the last meeting, when you had stated that you realize that this is merely adopting our ordinance and creating the avenue for us to provide the list as required by law, I do. My point was made last meeting with my vote. I'm unhappy, rather, with the mandate from the state, but I do intend to switch my vote and vote for this. But I'm uneasy with it. I do feel, as Mayor Dutre did state last meeting in the initial presentation that you gave on this a couple of months ago, I do agree. This does provide basically an inventory list, city by city, to those that want to cause trouble and wreak havoc, and it identifies what cities have and don't have. And it makes the cities that don't have quite the inventory of adequate arsenal to combat rioting or any type of criminal element, it does make them vulnerable. And it is providing more or less a shopping list to criminals that they can pick and choose which areas to wreak havoc in, knowing that those agencies don't have quite the best design weaponry, whatever it may be, to combat that problem and quell it fast. Let's hearken back to the situation in San Bernardino a year ago or two years ago, the summer, where there were near riots in the city of San Bernardino. They asked for backup. Our agency was one that went and helped the city of San Bernardino quell those problems there in that city. This is not good policy, but it is state law. I hope somebody challenges it. I really do wish we as a city would have said no, and maybe we could have been the gatekeepers of local control and local autonomy in challenging this in court, but we're not there. But I will vote for this reluctantly, sir, and I am fully behind any police department that defends its residents of any municipality.
Thank you. Mayor Protemru, did you have any comments?
No, that's it.
All right, let's have an electronic vote. Five zero approved.
And of course, we read it by a number and title only. Okay, it's ordinance 22-1000, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Montclair, adopting a policy for the use of military equipment by the Montclair Police Department.
Thank you. Next item is consent calendar. And I want to ask if we have any items you wish to pull. So I'll start at my left. Anybody at my left? No?
Yeah.
One, Tanis?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment about item B13.
All right, B13 on my left. All right, how about my right? Any items at my right?
Mr. Mayor, I also have B13 since it's been pulled, but B like boy 10 and C like Charlie 1, D like David 1. B10, 13, C1, D1.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's start with B10.
Question to staff. I read the report. I understand that we're rejecting bids because the utility connections became an issue. The price of the cost associated with getting those hookups addressed well exceeded the proposed budget that we had approved. One, what was the amount again that we earmarked for this?
$80,000.
That's under the engineer's estimate, correct?
Yes, that was the engineer's estimate.
Now, if I understand correctly, was it $20,000 or $25,000 was to be given to us? Is this the Greyhound bathroom?
$25,000 will come from Greyhound for the installation of the restroom, yes.
Okay, here's my question, because in the report it says that we can do this in-house and save about 50% of the costs. Kind of bothered by that, because are we not bothered by the savings, but I believe that if we would have contracted out, we no doubt would have paid the higher labor cost to individuals that would have provided the labor. Are we going to provide a, well, you'd say 50%, we're going to provide some degree of extra compensation to our employees for doing the jobs that the contractors would have?
The work will be done on their regular time. If there's a requirement for them to do it on overtime, they would be compensated at time and a half for their overtime work. They do have the technical skills to do the requirements related to the completion of the utility side of issues. The bids that came in were just excessively high, and it just made more sense for the city to reevaluate the process to determine whether or not a lot of that work could be done in-house. And our public works staff is confident that they can do it in-house. So do we compensate them additionally, only if there's overtime work required?
And we don't, well, I take it we have to get certain authorization from the state, because the state owns the property, correct?
The state and SBC TA have given the city full authority as to execute the terms related to managing the property. So when it comes to issues of parking lot maintenance, for example, we have an agreement with Caltrans related to picking up trash and doing other services related to the parking lot maintenance. We are also trying to expand the contract with Caltrans so that we can do additional duties related to maintenance of the parking fields. As it relates to all of the structures, like the canopies and other maintenance and improvement items, those are the responsibility under the contract, the cooperative agreement, with both Caltrans and San Bernardino County Transportation Authority. Those responsibilities rely with the city of Montclair. So we have the full authority to act in these regards. We do have to get a permit from Caltrans to place the restroom on the property, because it is still Caltrans property. But Caltrans has agreed that they will issue the permit from the city, but they want all of the other responsibilities to handle exclusively by the city.
And then utilizing existing city staff to devote to this project, are we going to be deficient in other requests with respect to public works in addressing other needs throughout the city while some of these staff members are devoted to this particular project?
Well, certainly whenever you re-task staff to do other things, it does take them away from doing their normal performances during the day. So for example, when we had the heavy windstorms, that directed the public works staff in a number of ways. They had to clear up the streets that were blocked by trees. As you know, we had trees that fell here at city hall that caused a lot of damage, so they had to be re-tasked to do those things. So yes, there will be a re-tasking, but it is the normal nature of government. One comes in to work in the morning and expects that they're going to do certain assignments. And if they're lucky, they'll get to do one thing on their list, because they get re-tasked to do other things. So that is why in this particular instance, if there's a requirement for additional overtime, that will certainly be made available to them.
And final question, sir. Thank you for the explanations thus far. Would we possibly entertain the option of hiring part-time staff if indeed we discover that this project requires additional time and/or whatever unforeseen necessary devotion to the connections?
If there is some specialty work that is outside of our ability to do, we would certainly engage hiring some contractors that we use from time to time for that purpose. We don't anticipate that, but certainly that is an option that's available to us if we have to go that direction.
All right, thank you, sir. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, next one is item 13, B13. Tanis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't have a question, I have a comment. When I looked at what our budget is and the long list of people who need assistance to these organizations that are helping our community and they need assistance, I thought, gosh, I don't know how they're going to do that. But I was happy to see that in looking at the list, nobody got turned away. Everybody got some kind of support, and we need to support them because they support our residents. I do remember some years ago being on the CAC and listening to some reports from the visiting nurses. And by the time they finished telling us what they had done for this child who had cancer, we were passing the Kleenex box back and forth, because we're all up here sobbing. It's very heartwarming to see what those organizations do for our residents, and I'm happy that we're able to give them some support. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I think, Ben?
Yeah, quick question again. I think my colleague just answered my question, but I just want confirmation. In years past, we've had House of Ruth as one of the recipients. Is there, well, I'm assuming they probably didn't apply.
I can answer that, Councilmember Lopez. The House of Ruth, we have tried to contact them the last few years, and there has been no response back.
That's unfortunate. All right, well, nonetheless, I'm encouraged to see a comparable nonprofit organization like Project Sister receiving some funds, but I just was curious if House of Ruth was not sought out or whatnot. But thank you for the clarification. Thank you, sir.
And I just want to state this. A lot of cities do this through their CDBG, Community of Own Block Grant. We kind of do it differently. We annually put $25,000, really invest in our community here, in our families, in our community, in our children, of course. And we're not stuck to $25,000. I mean, the council in the future, we want to increase that dollar amount. That's an option we have, as long as we have the money in the budget to do that. So I want to let the council know that part. But we'll move on to item C1 now. I think that's Ben.
Get to the page. Yeah, regarding the hazardous disposal, I'm fine with the contract. What I wanted to know is presently, Montclair residents have to go, I believe, either to the city of Ontario, down in the southern portion by Bondview and whatnot. There's a park down there, or the city yard in Upland to dispose of hazardous materials, needles or whatnot. I understand we're extending the contract for five years, correct? And in the staff report and in the contract itself, I did not see how we were going, or how they were going to designate locations for these, for folks to dump off certain hazardous materials. Are we going to, is it basically going to be the status quo, same options? Or is there going to be a new place within our city limits where our residents can dispose of a variety of hazardous materials?
No, so it'll be the same locations. It'll be a location in Chino, Ontario, and the city of Upland for this particular area. It becomes more of an issue of operating costs for San Bernardino County. They would have to add additional personnel, which would raise the contract amount for all the respective cities if they added additional locations. So we have certainly asked in the past, it's been a number of years since we've asked that Montclair be added into the mix, but the county has maintained that these three facilities appear to be more than adequate from their perspective. One, a lot of people don't necessarily take advantage of it, so there's not a lot of volume that goes to these three locations. And they don't feel that, given that volume that they do receive, warrants additional locations. So we will continue to press to ask that Montclair, specifically the city yard, be included as a location that is added to one of the agencies that these sorts of materials can be deposited at, but the county is just not there yet with us.
And I appreciate hearing that. I would eventually like to see the city be on that list of available locations for our residents. I personally use the city of Upland, the city yard there for disposal of used medical supplies. So this hits home, so that's why I asked the question. But if staff could pursue that, perhaps when we renegotiate that or in the middle of this contract, that'd be appreciated.
We will continue to press it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I too have asked that over the years and have received the same answer, that the county thinks that these three sites are more than adequate.
Well, it's interesting. When I have gone to the city of Upland, they obviously ask for your ID or there's the zip code. And when I tell them Montclair 91763, sometimes the staff says, oh, we don't get to many from your city. It's few and far between that we see a Montclair resident. Yeah, perhaps so, perhaps so. But nonetheless, I just want to see the education aspect of this also be given to residents, because I do know unfortunately, a lot of residents do continue to dump this stuff in their trash, and it becomes a problem for our trash hauler. But I would like to see the education level of this be beefed up big time. Thank you.
We will add an article into the community newsletter that goes out this year.
Okay, the last one is item D1.
Well, my first question is, what was the impetus for bringing this issue up before the council at this stage?
Well, let me state this. League California Cities has taken a very strong opposition position on this proposed ballot measure that this organization is circulating signatures right now. So that's coming from the League of California Cities. And based on the text of the message of the information I've read, based on the information that California has provided, if this measure is adopted by the voters of California in November, it's going to create much havoc on local governments' ability to raise fees and taxes and other revenue in order to provide for operations of services. So because the League of California Cities took an opposition position and asked the cities to adopt a resolution in preparations for the circulation, I request this be in the city council agenda for discussion and for adoption.
All right, I appreciate the explanation, Mr. Mayor. I happen to be of a different persuasion, no surprise, when it comes to issues like this. I would just go on record and state to you, my colleagues, one, this measure, if it were to be approved by the voters, would not affect any Measure L funds, because those were adopted before January of 2022. So our infrastructure plan, our pension obligation bonds, anything related to Measure L that we use those funds would be untouched. What this measure would do, yes, it would probably tighten the ability for any municipality, but indeed us, to put on, or for us unilaterally, to impose taxes or restrict or increase proposed fees or whatnot without going to the voters directly. I would state that at a time when the state is experiencing severe or drastic or astronomical surpluses, I think that it would be prudent for local governments to adhere to a little bit more prudent policy in not being quick at the switch to go to voters and ask them for money. Now, I'm not saying that we are. I think we already did that with Measure L, and I don't anticipate this council or any future council going back to the voters anytime soon of the city asking for additional increase. But this basically gives voters the right to vote on any future tax increases at the state or local level or the county level. And it indeed would earmark any monies raised by tax increases. It would specifically force us to spend it on the items that we had proposed to the public to use for. And it would do so in a limited time, so there are no longer perpetual tax increases that could be in place for 30, 40, 50 years on the residents. And we would have to go back once the timeframe has expanded and we use those funds. I don't think that's a bad thing. So I'm against coming out with an opposition, an opposed position on this proposed proposition at the moment. I would respectfully ask that we not take a position now, that we perhaps wait till a little bit more of the debate and argument comes forward. But I understand I'm probably going to be in the minority, and that's fine. I just wanted to go on record with my comments and my opinion on this that perhaps this isn't the position we should be taking at this time.
Well, and I'll, we'll take a separate vote on this matter here, but the problem with this measure has been... with this measure is, is it, it brings states and local governments together. So, one it does is prohibits local voters from providing direction on how local tax dollars should be spent by prohibiting, prohibiting local advisory committees. So, it takes that right away from local voters, decide how the local money gets spent. It sets new standards for fees and charges paid for use of local and state government property. So, we have a property that we own, we'll be limiting how much fees, like a lease, that we can charge to a utility company. It changes the definition of an actual cost for fees and charges. So, if we have a usually overhead cost that we charge, it really gradually limit what the overhead costs. One will be sewers, the other will be, for example, Burt Tech disposable fees. It requires voter approval for fines, penalties, and levies for corporations and property owners that violate state and local law. So, our co-enforcement goes out and issues citations for co-violators. We will not be able to do that. We have to go back to the voters, get the voters to approve it in order to levy fines on, on property owners. You know, requires new tax be imposed only for a split of time. I'm okay with that. Requires all taxes be adopted after January 21st to require a majority vote of state taxes. I'm okay with that, but the problem is, it lumps us with the state. You know, if they want to go after the state, leave us the local government alone, or vice versa. So, that's why this is in front of us, and I urge my colleagues to support this measure. So, let's do this. Let's have one motion for the entire consent calendar with the exception of item D1. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, and let's do electronic vote. Yes, yes. And it should be 5-0. Okay, and then I'll just, I'll move for item D1. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, and let's have electronic vote. And that's 4-1. Lopez, no. Okay. Next item is item 10A, business item. And before we go there, we have a council workshop under item 11A. So, if there's no objection by the city council, we will have a discussion of the audit responsibilities and process on Monday, April the 4th at 5:45. Any oppositions to that? If not, then that's so ordered. And now we go back to item 10A. I want to begin by saying that, if there's members in the audience that wish to speak on this item, so you haven't already submitted your blue card, this is the time to submit your blue card to our city clerk. If you're on Zoom or on the phone, this is the time to raise your hand. So, raise your, your hand feature, and if you're on the phone, you'll hit star nine. I'm going to repeat that again. If you're on electronic device, raise hand feature, you hit that, and if you're on the phone, you hit star nine. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to first start with staff presentation, then second of all will be questions from the council, then third of all will be comments from the public, which you have five minutes, and then lastly, the city council deliberation on this item. I just want to state this again. I want to ask the audience, if you wish to speak on item, item number 10, please either submit your blue card, hit your, hit your raise hand device, or hit star nine before we start public comment. After we start public comments, we're not going to accept any more comments. Okay, so I'm going to ask that the city clerk, is it city clerk or city, who's starting with the presentation, city clerk or city manager?
That'll be me, the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, you may want to let the [bleep] here know where they send the cards. I don't think-
Okay, again, if you have a blue card you want to submit, a blue card, you'll just bring it to this gentleman over here, he'll take it from you. Mike, if you have a blue card you wish to submit. And again, if you're on electronic device, you hit your raise hand feature. If you're on the phone, you hit star nine. And so, again, this item is to consider discussing, providing direction regarding consideration of resolution of censure, disapproving, inserting certain conduct and behavior of Montclair City Councilman Benjamin Lopez, ratifying protection actions taken and recommended by the city council, city manager. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Why am I not moving forward?
So, this evening we were asking a question, why a discussion of censure. At the March 7, 2022 meeting of the city council, a motion was made and adopted to place on the March 21st, 2022 city council agenda, a discussion to consider censuring Councilmember Benjamin Lopez. The censure discussion is a response to the following: evidence in the record and findings made by an independent workplace investigator sustaining allegations of certain employees that Councilmember Lopez interacted with them in an appropriate manner; the filing of separate verified complaints and lawsuits by the same employees against Councilmember Lopez containing allegations of discrimination based on sexual orientation and unlawful sexual harassment. Why a discussion of censure? In 2021, on two separate occasions, certain employees brought forward to city management allegations that Councilmember Lopez interacted with them in an inappropriate manner. In response, the city manager implemented measures to protect employees from further harassment, discrimination, bullying, and retaliation, and requested city council approval and agreement to hire an independent workplace investigator to investigate the allegations. At its meeting of August 2, 2021, the city council approved agreement number 21-47 with EXTTI for professional workplace services and expert testimony, training, and investigations. The EXTTI investigator, an independent workplace investigator certified by the Association of Workplace Investigators, conducted an investigation into the allegations. At a March 1, 2022 special meeting that adjourned to closed session, the investigator provided the city council with an oral presentation of the investigation and findings reached. What is a censure? Censure is an official condemnation or reprimand of a public official taken in an open session to formally recognize and express authoritative disapproval of an incumbent's actions. What is the purpose of censure? Censure is used to demonstrate that the city council does not condone or endorse an incumbent's behavior or conduct, and that the city council is taking steps to prevent the conduct from continuing. Censure serves as a statement to the public that certain conduct and behavior is unacceptable to other members of the city council. Censure also functions as a form of self-policing for elected officials. What can trigger adoption of a resolution of censure? Examples of conduct commonly used as the basis for censure include the following: breach of fiduciary duties, improper or offensive behavior or conduct toward or other elected officers, employees, citizens, or others; failure, failure to disclose conflicts of interest; disruption of city council meetings, for example overt hostility, profanity, intimidation, et cetera, and violations of law. What is the process for adoption of a resolution of censure? A resolution of censure is adopted by majority approval of the city council at a special or regular city council meeting at which a quorum of the governing board is present. The city council may adopt a resolution of censure if there is a substantial evidence in the record to support a city council decision to censure a city council incumbent. The resolution of censure should state the reasons for the censure. What is the impact of censure on an incumbent's powers and authority? Censure is a serious action. Censure does not, however, remove an incumbent from office, nor restrict the incumbent's statutory powers and authority he, she has as a city council member. A formal censure does, however, serve as a collective act of public reprimand, rebuke, or disapproval declaring the subject behavior unacceptable. What due process rights are available to the incumbent subject to censure? A city council incumbent subject to censure is entitled to due process and an opportunity to be heard on and respond to a proposed resolution of censure. The Montclair city attorney shall provide Councilmember Lopez with advance notice by email and regular mail of the date, time, and location when the city council may consider a resolution of censure. What was the determination of the independent workplace investigation? The independent workplace investigation sustained allegations that Councilmember Lopez, as a private individual acting outside the course and scope of his duties, responsibilities, and performance as a member of the Montclair city council, did engage in the following: conduct an extended conversation with one employee of the city about the employee's sexual orientation, and intentionally hid his identity from another employee of the city when they communicated on social media dating sites, and that their communication included sharing both sexually explicit content and photographs. What actions did the city take once allegations were made to protect employees from further harassment and discrimination and from retaliation? Pursuant to chapter 2.08 of the Montclair municipal code, the city manager is officially charged with supervising the employees of the organization. City council members have no such charge, and except as otherwise provided for, should not become involved with individual employees and personnel-related matters. Any direct involvement in personnel-related matters should only be contemplated by the whole of the city council, and even then as a matter of consideration related to employees over whom the council has appointed authority, and those individuals are the city attorney and the city manager. The city manager, in his leadership role for all employees of the organization, implements procedures and programs in compliance with state and federal laws designed to protect employees from harassment, bullying, discrimination, and retaliation. Once the city manager was advised of complaints made by certain employees of the city, he was obligated to respond by implementing a number of workplace measures to protect employees of the organization, including the following: requesting an investigation of the allegations, and protecting employees from further harassment and discrimination and from retaliation. When allegations of harassment, discrimination, bullying, or retaliation reportedly originate with a member of the city council, the city manager enacts decisions designed to protect employees from a repeat of such behavior while remaining respectful of free speech, legislative prerogatives, and the subject incumbent's continued exercise of council authority. Protective measures taken by the city manager gained greater relevance and urgency after the independent workplace investigator presented findings sustaining the allegations made by certain employees. Complaints brought to the attention of city management were immediately responded to as follows: complaints were treated with due seriousness, employees were offered organizational support, employee referrals were made available through a third-party counseling service provided by the city. Each employee was directed to preserve any evidence in his or her possession. Each employee was advised of the following: through their respective labor group agreements, complaint and grievance processes have been established. Employees have the right to file a complaint with the city. Employee complaints are to be processed and treated with fairness and respect. Employee class status based on sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, marital status, political affiliation, and other classes are protected under federal and state law. Separately, the employees were directed to meet with the Administrative Services Human Resources Director regarding the filing and processing of their respective complaints. Each employee was also advised of the following: an independent workplace investigator would be hired to conduct an investigation into respective allegations, and no effort would be made by the city to conduct the investigation in-house or become involved in the conduct of the independent investigation. If a written investigation report is produced, the city would seek to keep the completed report confidential and redact employee identities where possible in the event the report is subject to disclosure through subpoena, discovery, or other judicial disclosure order. The Montclair organization seeks to prevent and take seriously any form of harassment, discrimination, bullying, or retaliation against any employee by any other employee, officer, or agent of the city. Steps taken by the city manager are intended to protect employees from discrimination, harassment, bullying, or retaliation within the organization. Furthermore, any form of harassment, discrimination, bullying, or retaliation shall be dealt with through appropriate levels of training, direction, and discipline. Complainants would not be subject to any adverse employment action related to the filing of their respective complaint or their cooperation in an investigation into their respective allegations, including the following adverse employment actions: the employees would not be subject to termination, retaliation, discipline, reduction in pay, demotion, change in shift or work hours, change in job responsibilities not associated with advancement, isolation or ostracism, exclusion from meetings or functions, or any threat of the above. Other actions taken include: each complainant is permitted to conduct his or her daily assignments without restriction, and in a manner that minimizes contact with Councilmember Lopez. In order to advert, in order to avoid adverse employment actions that may hinder work performance, each complainant is provided discretionary latitude regarding the performance of any duty that may place the employee in a position where in-person contact with Councilmember Lopez may be unavoidable, including the following: excused attendance from meetings and other city activities, temporary reassignment, meeting attendance through Zoom or telephonically rather than in person, telecommuting or work at home when feasible, and other proposed options. Also, other actions: at different points during the course of the independent investigation into allegations by certain employees, the city attorney directed Councilmember Lopez to avoid all personal and professional interactions with the complainants. Prior to and after their respective complaints, each complainant received scheduled promotions, above-average performance evaluations, and merit-based wage and benefit adjustments indicating that the city did not take any adverse actions against each of the two employees. The city manager regularly meets with each complainant to inquire about any interactions or potential interactions with Councilmember Lopez, and any mistreatment from any employee, supervisor, manager, agent, or officer of the city that may be directly or indirectly related to the nature of the harassments or discriminatory treatment subjected to or stemmed from the filing of their respective complaints. Supervisors are prohibited from taking any adverse employment action as it relates to the subject matter of any investigation and employee's protected status and/or the filing of any complaint or civil action. No employment-related matter, including those related to the filing of any complaint, the conduct of any investigation, or an employee's protected status, shall be used as pretext for an adverse employment action. Complainants are protected from and shall not be subject to any continued or future form of harassment, bullying, discrimination, or retaliation as it relates to their protected status or their respective decision to file a complaint or civil action. There shall be no restrictions on a complainant's ability to professionally develop and advance in the Montclair organization. California law requires employers with five or more employees to provide harassment prevention training to city council members, managers, supervisors, and other designated employees every two years. Montclair complies with state training and education requirements. Mandatory harassment prevention training is provided within six months of date of hire, promotion, appointment, or election to office, and again, every two years thereafter. City records indicate that each member of the city council has received the required harassment prevention training. Harassment prevention training has two objectives: provides insight on how an employee can recognize harassment, discrimination, bullying, and retaliation, and communicate with employees, officers, elected and appointed officials, and agents that unwelcome harassing conduct will not be tolerated, and no employee, officer, or agent of the city shall engage in any form of harassment, discrimination, bullying, retaliation, or creation of a hostile work environment. An independent workplace investigator was hired to conduct an investigation into certain employee allegations of inappropriate interactions initiated by Councilmember Lopez. of inappropriate interactions initiated by Councilmember Lopez. The independent workplace investigator sustained allegations that Councilmember Lopez interacted with them in an inappropriate manner, including that he did engage in the following: conducted an extended conversation with one employee of the city about the employee's sexual orientation, and intentionally hid his identity from another employee of the city when they communicated on social media dating sites, and their communication included sharing both sexually explicit content and photographs. Based on the evidence in the record, Councilmember Lopez will be required to recuse himself from voting on and future involvement in any personnel matter related to the complainants. Upon the city council's receipt of the independent workplace investigator's oral report sustaining complainant's allegations, the city found it necessary to impose certain access restrictions on Councilmember Lopez. He received notification of that communication on March 3, 2022, and those restrictions include the following: Access to all city-owned and operated facilities is restricted, including removal of all entry authorizations related to external and internal electric doors at city facilities. For the purpose of conducting city council business, access is permitted to the following areas at city facilities during regular operating hours: public areas of city facilities, the city council chambers and city manager's conference room or other designated locations controlled and operated by the city for scheduled meetings of the city council, and other city meetings, rooms, and offices as required for the purpose and benefit of the city and by direct invite by the city manager or at Councilmember Lopez's request and upon approval by the city manager. Prohibitions against one-on-one contact with employees of the city. This includes restrictions on participation in ride-along events provided through the city's code enforcement, public works, human services, police, and fire departments. Prohibition against overnight stays in public safety crew sleeping quarters, although I do note that this restriction has been extended to all city personnel not assigned to the respective shift. Prohibition against the use of any locker room or exercise facilities owned and operated by the city and available to or designated for use by employees of the city. When in the proximity of complainants, Councilmember Lopez bears the burden and responsibility to avoid physical interaction and visual or spatial contact with the complainants, and the complainants shall be excused from performing a conflicting assignment if the performance of official duties brings him or her into contact with Councilmember Lopez and provided other accommodations as necessary to protect the employees. Councilmember Lopez shall discontinue any future form of workplace-related harassment, bullying, discrimination, or retaliation, including as it relates to each complainant's protected status or his/her respective decision to file a complaint or civil action. This obviously does not exclude his ability to engage them in a court of law that is certainly within his right. Removal of access to the city's universal Z drive where work-related documents, photographs, and communications between employees are shared. Any specific city-related document requiring Councilmember Lopez's attention will be forwarded to him by the city manager, city attorney, or city clerk under separate communication. The city clerk will arrange for the delivery of city council agendas, mail, and other relevant documents requiring Councilmember Lopez's attention to his home by email or otherwise arranged for their pickup at City Hall by Councilmember Lopez or his representative. All inter-agency email and text communications from Councilmember Lopez shall be directed only to his city council colleagues, the city attorney, or the city manager, and to the city clerk for inquiries related to city council agendas and election items only. Except as otherwise provided, Councilmember Lopez is prohibited from communicating in an official or personal capacity with any employee of the city of Montclair via electronic communications, social media, written correspondence, or other media. Councilmember Lopez has been provided a city-owned and controlled laptop for home use to conduct city business only. A city-issued cellphone will also be provided upon request to, again, conduct city business only. Councilmember Lopez was advised in writing that all information, texts, emails, and actions conducted on city-provided equipment, including attorney-client privileged communications, are discoverable by the city and its agents, and I do want to emphasize that these requirements are imposed on every employee of the organization who uses city-provided equipment. The use of city-provided equipment means simply that any business that you conduct on that device can be discoverable by the city of Montclair. Councilmember Lopez is required to sign a disclosure form acknowledging the city rights in this regard, just as every city employee is also required to do. Failure to not sign or return the disclosure form does not abrogate the city's legal right to discovery. Again, that is the same for every employee who has an electronic device provided by the city. Councilmember Lopez was advised in writing that any city-related work and communications conducted on personal electronic equipment are also discoverable by the city, regardless of acknowledgement of the city's rights, his acknowledgement of the city's rights in this regard. That is a court decision. Every employee, every city official needs to know that if you engage in city business on your personal devices, that information is discoverable. What other prohibitions can city council consider under censure? In the area of committee assignments, city council members serve on committees of the city council by appointment of the mayor and approval by a majority of the city council. The city council may consider removing Councilmember Lopez from the following: all city council committees, subcommittees of the city council, city-sponsored committees, including but not limited to event, social, recreation, and community-oriented committees, and interagency committees and boards involving city of Montclair representation, other city representation. The city council majority may prohibit Councilmember Lopez from speaking on behalf of the city council or representing the city in any capacity other than as authorized in the Montclair Municipal Code. So, for example, Councilmember Lopez is sitting as a city council member at city council meetings and has every right to speak and represent his issues and concerns at city council meetings. Travel: The city council may consider prohibiting Councilmember Lopez from the following: all city-paid, non-paid travel to conferences, meetings, training, and other events where representation of the city is involved, and non-paid or paid travel provided through other public or private entities where representation of the city of Montclair is involved. The city council may also direct attendance by Councilmember Lopez at a city-approved sexual harassment prevention training program and other training programs as may be required by the city manager. Training should occur within 30 calendar days following any action by the city council to adopt a resolution of censure, and the council may direct that such training be repeated annually, subject to scheduling by the city manager. The city council and city manager, from time to time, may consider imposing other actions as necessary to protect the employees of the city from harassment, discrimination, bullying, or retaliation. All city council ratified actions would remain in place until otherwise rescinded by the appropriate authority. Brings me to the conclusion of my comments. The fiscal impact in relation to the council's consideration of moving forward as it relates to the potential adoption of a censure, a resolution of censure has no direct impact on the city's general fund, and it is, as far as recommendation, staff can only say that it is the prerogative of the city council to consider discussing and providing direction to staff regarding consideration of a resolution of censure. Effectively, this matter is with the city council.
A minute recess, and we'll be back in five minutes.
Mr. Mike on, everybody's back now at 8:05. And so we've just completed the presentation by staff. I'll leave off some questions here. So today, we are, I believe, we have three things the city councils is to consider. One is, if you wish, to schedule a meeting for the censure hearing. Am I correct, city attorney? First question, the city council wants a scheduled meeting.
For you to provide direction to staff.
When that meeting will take place. Second is, what's the, what language will be in the resolution? Am I correct? And the third is to sustain the city manager's actions taken pertaining to this item. Am I correct?
For you to consider that.
Consider it. Obviously, not now, but later in the agenda. And then, in terms of the censure hearing, how does that status work? Is it, is it each side, the city? And Mr. Lopez will have, like, perhaps 15 minutes each to make their cases? How's that work, the format?
We can, I suppose we can set up some time limits, but it's really just have a discussion. And certainly, Mr. Lopez can have input. He's entitled to an ability to be heard and speak out on the issue as well.
Okay, and then, so there would be, perhaps could be some format you'll come up with and let Mr. Lopez know and his legal counsel know? Am I correct?
I can do that.
Okay. and then, obviously, each side makes a presentation. The city council can also ask questions of each side. Am I correct? Diane?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Mr. Lopez, during the hearing, will he be, do you recommend he be seated at the dais? Or do you recommend he be seated not at the dais for the actual hearing?
I think, I think the council members should all remain at the dais and speak from their seats.
So all five of us will be, Councilmember Lopez will also be at the dais if he wishes to do so. Okay. All right, only thing is, you're recommending he has to recuse himself from voting on the hearing. Am I correct? Or is that, he can also vote on the hearing?
Yes.
On the censure resolution, he can vote on it?
Yes, yes, he can.
All five of us can vote on the censure resolution? Okay. I just want to clarify that. In regards to the investigator, I don't believe, maybe I missed a presentation, but this city council did meet with the investigator. Am I correct, on March 1?
Yes, you were presented with an oral report.
Oral report investigation.
A detailed oral report of her investigation and her interviews.
Okay. And can that document be presented to the public?
Not at, not at this time. I'm treating it as a confidential personnel matter and as a document that is subject to the attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
So it has not been disclosed to anyone.
So essentially, the city council is somewhat limited in what we can disclose in that interview, in that meeting that took place with the investigators because of the, because of the privilege.
Well, we want to protect the privacy of the individuals.
As well.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, based on your experience in when an employee commits harassment allegations, what is the process the city undertakes? Actually, not the city, but basically, any private sector or public sector employees, is it the same process that you just talked about in this presentation? Or is there a different process?
Well, the processes are similar, but the conclusions as far as what staff is able to do in dealing with an employee of the organization versus a city council member are completely different. Council members cannot be removed by office, by censure, or any other action taken by the city council. State law does not provide a mechanism for that. However, when it comes to employees of the organization, the outcomes would be more under the control of the city manager. We would conduct an investigation if allegations are made by employees of the organization against another employee, and if the allegations warrant, then there would be disciplinary action against the employee, and that disciplinary action can be up to and including termination. Obviously, we cannot impose Obviously, we cannot impose disciplinary actions on a member of the City Council. City Council members can't impose disciplinary actions on sitting members of the City Council. You're basically limited to considering the censure issue. But at staff level, it is fully under control of state law. And as relates to our internal personnel-related processes, agreements that we've negotiated between the bargaining agreements through MOUs or other forms of agreements. We use those as the tool in which to interact with the employee. So, for example, if an employee is in violation of a section of the MOU and is determined to be a significant violation, it's very likely that we would move towards a termination of that employee. Employee can obviously file a wrongful termination charge against the city and take us to court. But I think in our case, we've had a highly successful track record. And I don't believe we've lost any wrongful termination cases in the city. At least the ones in the past, we may have a few that are still outstanding, but our track record seems to even be very positive with that. So the city makes certain that any allegations at the employee level are investigated thoroughly before we proceed with termination. Termination, of course, is a last recourse if we can engage in other potential disciplinary actions such as including a demotion, a reduction in pay, a last chance agreement with the employee. We will try those first, but again, it depends on the gravity of the situation. And we will simply deal with each case on an individual basis.
Essentially, the restrictions that you mentioned in your report are the only restrictions that you can really impose upon is an elected official, such as here on the City Council or basically any elected board in City California.
These are, well, there are other actions that are available, but they require extraordinary effort. So, for example, can a council member be removed from office? Well, yes, but only under specific provisions provided under state law. So, for example, if a council member moves outside of the municipal jurisdiction and no longer has residency in the city, you can remove a council member for that reason. It doesn't mean that the council member can't file a lawsuit against you for that removal. But those are the kinds of restrictive provisions that are allowed under state law. And there are only a handful, maybe about six to eight different provisions that allow you to act. But again, they're very restrictive when it comes to a behavioral or a conduct issue. The law in the state of California does not address that, and you are effectively restricted to dealing with censure as your primary tool.
And what's, okay, and what's listed in your presentation? That's all I have. Any more questions by council members on my left? Anybody on my left? Anybody on my right? Anybody, any questions? All right. Then let's go ahead with public comment. And I'm assuming that everybody who wants to speak, you've either raised your hand by now, submitted a card, or hit star nine. So we're not going to accept any more public speakers. I'm going to hand it over to the City Clerk. Again, you will have five minutes to speak. And City Clerk, it's all yours.
Okay, so I did receive several requests via email. One of them, the first one was Alma Trejo, and I see that she has her hand raised. So we'll go ahead and take her comment first. Are you there, Alma?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
You have five minutes, Alma.
Hello, good evening, y'all. I am a resident of Montclair for the past 23 years. I've been here before because, you know, as residents of Montclair, many of us have been very concerned with Mr. Lopez's presence on City Council, his behavior outside of City Council, both on social media and in our neighboring city of Upland. You know, I wish I could say that I am surprised, but I am not. You know, we tried to, we knew that this individual was bringing his awful behavior values to our city. And we weren't wrong when we warned you about it, how his homophobic rhetoric truly showed us who he truly is. And if you have taken a look into his social media, you would be able to see that it is the most despicable horrifying meme that anybody could, anybody on office in our city should have up. It's just, you know, as an adult, I can't fathom that kind of, um, those kind of messages being sent around without really having any regard for the safety of the public that he represents. Um, but you know, I feel like our words really fell on deaf ears because many of us were just characterized as angry people who were just trying to vilify a man for his past mistake. But we knew based on his online presence, based on his actions in other cities, based on what behavior he exhibited when he was confronted with these issues, we knew that he had not done the work to undo the damage. As a matter of fact, I find that Mr. Lopez was very arrogant that he never publicly admitted his fault. He never apologized for his hurtful and dangerous behavior. And unfortunately, I feel like some members tried to peddle that narrative. Unfortunately, I feel like Mayor De Trey was very supportive of Mr. Lopez and never once really stood for the city and the values that our city holds. And look at, look at how his behavior is impacting our city now. Now our city must spend money on litigation because Mr. Lopez harassed two men from the very same vulnerable population he once lobbied against. And now these two city employees must work through the trauma of being sexually harassed. As a labor organizer, this is beyond aggravating for me. Like, as city leadership, it is your responsibility to ensure, I know, and thank you for the City Manager for providing that very thorough presentation, I learned a lot. But I feel, I find that we lead with our example and we lead with our actions. So it was your responsibility to ensure that the hardworking people that make our city run feel safe, protected, and heard. I think censure is something that needs to happen, absolutely. And I very much agree with all the measures that are being taken against or because of this situation. Unfortunately, I don't think that the sexual harassment training is enough because we really need to change the culture of, that perpetuates sexual harassment in the workplace. So I think we need to go further than that. I need, I think we really need to address the issues underlying sexual harassment, which tend to be sexism, homophobia, classism, all the isms. So I think we need to have a more thorough conversation about that, about the root of the problem, if we really want to prevent it. And, you know, Mr. Lopez, if you really have any humility left, or you care one bit about your career, or your family, or this community, or even the workers, you would consider resigning and working on undoing the damage and chaos you have created. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's have our next speaker, please.
All right, next is Bruce Culp.
Hello again, Bruce, are you there?
I am here.
All right, it's all yours.
First of all, I'd like to say I'm sorry to the victims of the sexual harassment by Ben Lopez. I know the trauma you've gone through, and I hope, you know, the healing can begin. Just know that there are residents here, including me, that will work hard to remove Ben Lopez as quickly as we can from, from office. He's not going to be there long enough to harass you very much any longer. So, to those victims, I hope you maintain your privacy and hold your head up high. You did the right thing by reporting it, getting it out there and letting the residents of this great city know the sexual predatory nature of Ben Lopez out there. I just, you know, the guy couldn't wait until he got elected, said the oath of office, took his sexual harassment training before he started preying upon his victims. It's just, you know, disgust me the way he worked so quickly to prey upon the city employees so quickly. And, you know, this is just, as the previous speaker said, it's just something that we knew was coming. But he conned his supporters into, you know, supporting him, and hopefully, they see and change their mind about what, what, what they elected in, into office. Now, let's get on to the cost, because, you know, this is not going to be free for the city. You know, Ben Lopez talks about all these unnecessary costs to the city that are imposed by the state and trying to get those recruited. Let's talk a little about those costs, because ongoing, I'm just looking at the, the presentation, the costs are enormous here. Let's see, you hired an outside investigator. That can't be free. The costs associated with the City Manager to implement the procedures to protect the victims. The City Attorney provides legal advice to the city and the council. Third-party counseling offered to the victims. Human Resources Department resources and staff. Investigate and provide material to file formal complaints to the city. Employee resources and equipment to allow victims to relocate their work area and minimize contact with Councilman Lopez. Regular meetings with victims by City Manager supervisors, those are all costs. Harassment training wasted by this man, okay? Information technology resources to prevent him from accessing electronic files. Employee, City Clerk, he has to now, you know, organize and maintain materials and get them delivered to him outside, that's costing us who knows how much. Employee resources related to ensure restricted access. First responder resources related to restricting Councilman Lopez from overnight stays and access to locker rooms. And of course, the City Council pay in reimbursement expenses, those are ongoing. And then possible denial of grants and other funds to the city based on his behavior, who knows? So I would ask that the City Council also adopt a motion to find out how much these costs are and produce those costs and present them to the, the public so that we know, we understand, the total cost of his actions are. And maybe, maybe Councilmember Lopez would do the right thing and reimburse the city, because he always wants to have these costs reimbursed. I'm sure his out-of-pocket expenses would, should, should, should be come out of this, you know? So I ask that the City Council put a motion forth to ask the city to figure out the costs associated with his actions and what it costs to maintain all these items that have to go on, ongoing. And, you know, he's forever harmed these victims. He continually to bully, intimidate these victims each time. Instead of a council meeting, you should be doing these meetings by phone or Zoom now. You know, you shouldn't be requiring the city, the staff to miss out on being in-person meetings. You should be the one not attending these meetings anymore. You don't have the right. All right? But we're going to find out a way to get you out of the council. You either can resign, which I hope you do, be a man and resign. Otherwise, we're going to recall you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Okay, and I also received a request from Tuan, there he is.
Okay.
Hello, good evening to the entire city, residents, staff, just everyone. I've said everything I could say these past two years, both verbally and in writings. Alma Trejo's written comment pretty much summarized everything that we feel and reflects so much of what so many of us has been feeling, our frustration, our anger, our grievance. And, I mean, I really have, I, I don't have words. I mean, it's just, I just find it so ironic that he spent all these decades attacking and harming LGBTQ folks only for it now to be revealed that he's been living a closeted lie. So what is it, Mr. Lopez? Are you a suppressed gay man living in denial? Is that why you attacked LGBTQ folks for over a decade? And why you have lied to the public about your true character? Because it's a reflection of your own self-hatred? And not only have you attempted to harm the LGBTQ community, but it's, and it's, but it's people like you that give LGBTQ folks a bad name, right? So if you're going to live in the closet, at least make sure it's a clean one. Make sure that, you know, photos you post or photos you send aren't, you know, going to be leaked somehow. And all these speakers calling in about his involvement in street safety and community service, I'm sorry, but none of those are unique contribution, because a lot of other people are involved in these community services. And a lot of people provides for the care and safety of our residents. But you know what he has done that is unique, though? His anti-LGBTQ history, 13 to 15 years of it, or his sexist, ableist, ageist, racist social media posts. And now, of course, the sexual harassment here at Montclair City Hall. I'm here to support our two city employees, and I'm sorry that this has happened to you, and know that there are way more of us who care about you and your well-being than those who would rather support this homophobic closeted case. And so I just want to say that we stand with you and support you. I also support the censoring, and I support what Mr. Starr outlined as the city's response to these cases. But I also do agree with Alma's call that we do need to do more about changing the culture. And that begins with hearing all of our concerns, any residents' concerns, and making genuine attempts to be changing your mindset and your behavior. But yeah, thank you to Mr. Starr for all the work that you do for the city. And we, a lot of us recognize it, so please don't think that it goes unnoticed. And as for you, Mr. Mayor De Trey and Bill Ruh, Councilman Bill Ruh, I'm also holding you accountable, because as Alma already mentioned, you endorsed Mr. Lopez at the last election. And so I'm holding you accountable for having a part in Mr. Lopez gaining a seat on that City Council and bringing this disgusting and shameful behavior and creating this toxic environment in the city of Montclair, because you two endorsed him. So I asked you before, and I'm going to ask you again, that you make an public apology for having endorsed him and for your failure to do more to avoid this situation from occurring. You owe our community at least that much, if not more. And Mr. Lopez, do, just resign. I mean, do us all a damn favor and just freaking resign. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker.
Next is Carolyn Raft.
Carolyn Raft. Hello, Carolyn.
Good evening, City Council members, it's nice to see you again. I have just something brief to say, but for those that aren't familiar with me, I retired two years ago from the City Council here in Montclair, and I'm here to put any doubt of honesty and integrity of the two young men that have bravely come forward with the accusations against Mr. Lopez. I have known these two men for quite a few years, as, for, as long as I've been mostly on the City Council, as well as Mr. Lopez since he was around 17 years old. I know these two young men would never accuse anyone of something that was not true. I know there are rumors that, going around, that maybe perhaps accusations that this is a frame-up job to get rid of Mr. Lopez, but believe me, these two young men would not do such a thing. Anyone that knows me and familiar with my 28 years knows I don't take things lightly. In my years with the council, I know that the management takes accusations very serious and does a thorough investigation before announcing any results. This takes time, because you have to be, get the facts right. Mr. Lopez, I would say to you that you need to resign, especially for your family's sake. We had another incident in Montclair after I was elected to the council, our former mayor, Larry Reinhardt, who was caught in a solicitation sting. He had the integrity to resign to save his family, the heartache and embarrassment. I surely do hope that you do the same for your family as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Rob Piperzki.
Mayor, members of the City Council, I am speaking tonight on the disgusting behavior of Councilman Ben Lopez. He has violated the sanctity of the office he holds and abused his authority in an attempt to gain sexual favors from city employees. This behavior is reprehensible. The City Council tonight should vote, I have no doubt, to censure Councilman Lopez. Anything less would condone this abusive behavior. Although a censure, by all accounts, is just a slap on the wrist. In fact, it is more a finger shaking, in that Lopez can remain on the council and perform his duties, waiting for his next chance to strike again, exposing employees and the public to his sexual advances in the future. I know Councilman Lopez has been denied access to the city buildings to protect employees in, from future assaults. In addition, Lopez must be banned from all committees within city and board commissions outside the city. Lopez is a liability, leaving him on these assignments exposes to the city in the future. As a background, as a former background investigator, I learned that past performance is indicative of future behavior. The two incidences we know about, in all probability, are only the tip of the proverbial iceberg. How many more of these dalliance victims are going to come forward? How many more lawsuits must we end? How many more lawsuits must we endure? Ben Lopez, this is not a sexual orientation issue. People do not now and have not had a problem with you being gay. People have known it for years. Well, we may be one, no one has a problem with, except maybe one group, the anti-gay groups that you spread your hateful messages for. However, people do have an issue with you. You are a liar and a hypocrite. During World War II, you would be the Jewish guy loading other Jewish people onto the trains to the death camps, all the time saying, "Take them, I'm not Jewish." Your behavior was and is predatory. You seek out people you feel you can control. I am glad we have two strong employees that stood up to you. Unfortunately, this is going to cost the city financially for your behavior. Every member of the council must demand you resign and accept nothing less. If you do not quit, the city council should start a recall process to show they want to protect the community. John Dutre, as mayor, you were the most prominent advocate for election of Ben Lopez. You spoke to the voters praising Lopez. You walked the streets passing out flyers saying how he would be a benefit to the city. As mayor, you must work as hard to rid this council of Ben Lopez as you fought to get him on the council. You are up for reelection this year and your support for Ben Lopez could become an issue for you, depending on how you proactively deal, deal with this. The fire department and police department association supported Lopez during the election campaign. Are they going to call for him to resign? They must come forward showing support for victimized employees. All employee groups must demand protection of their members. They must ask Ben Lopez immediate resignation. This unethical behavior is not criminal, but only civil. If any employee were to make these type of unwanted sexual advances, they could be fired by the city manager. As an elected official, Councilman Lopez cannot be fired unless there was a criminal matter and he was convicted. Why does the city not create a law protecting employees from abuses from elected officials making this type of law a misdemeanor or felony crime? The Montclair City Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber of Commerce should also call for Ben Lopez to resign. The chamber will promote, this is a business-friendly community. Can the chamber take the chance that Councilman Lopez will not bring disgrace to their organization like he has done to the city of Montclair? The city of Montclair has been dragged into this lawsuit caused by Lopez's personal sexual desires. Councilman Lopez was not acting in the interest of the city when he committed these abuses. The city must and will protect the city interests, but they should not pay for any legal representation for Councilman Lopez. He acted in his own interest outside the scope and course of his duties as councilman. This lawsuit will cost the city a substantial sum of money. The money will come from the general fund and take away money from needed projects to improve the city.
Thank you, Rob. Five minutes, sorry.
Okay. But who's going to pay for this? Does this mean that some alleys and streets?
Yeah, I think, Rob, I apologize, Rob, your five minutes is up. Yeah, I understand, Rob, but your five minutes is up. I understand, Rob, your five minutes is up. We have next speaker, please. Thank you. Next speaker, please. And I will say this, we have five minutes and part of the five minutes is to allow members of the public to speak, but also allow other members to speak as well. So, go ahead.
And we have Selena Gutierrez.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Selena Gutierrez and I have been a resident of Montclair for six years. When moving to the city, I enrolled my son in the city's Montclair Little League. Our family has been playing ever since with no concerns. My son couldn't be here tonight due to pre-spring break plans to sleep over at his grandmother's. If not, he would have been here. Tonight, I stand here in support of Councilman Ben Lopez, or as I call him, Coach Ben. In all the years with city, with Montclair Little League, which is where I met him, Coach Ben has always been our coach and more importantly, he has always been respectful and kind to my child and family, along with other players and families. Due to false allegations, I want to enlighten those who say otherwise and share that in a few seasons with, within the last five years, Coach has coached same-sex parents and never treated them any differently. Never once has Councilman, Councilman Ben Lopez treated those children or families in a negative way. He is always respectful and kind, never discriminating. I stand here today and not behind a computer screen trying to bully and spread a false narrative. Ben Lopez is fair and respectful human being and a friend. And his position on the councilman, as a councilman, is greatly respected in my book and by many. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
And then we did receive a few written comments that I could go ahead and read if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay, so the first one is from Anel Bravo-Bautista. I'm writing on behalf of myself and the others who live in my household. I have been a resident of Montclair since 1997. I'm writing to urge the city council and the mayor to take immediate and swift disciplinary action against Councilmember Ben Lopez. When Ben Lopez was first running and subsequently elected to Montclair City Council, I, along with other members of the community, were horrified to learn about his history of homophobic actions which do not align with our community. We have been blocked and silenced by him and the mayor for speaking up against this. Now that these lawsuits against him have come out, we urge the mayor and the rest of the city council to take action against Councilmember Lopez. This is not what our city should be spending tax dollars on. The next one is Javier Hernandez. I am the executive director of the Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice. We work with over 50 organizations in the inland empire and reach over 50,000 inland empire families every year, including residents of the city of Montclair. The ICIJ is in full support of a censure of Councilmember Lopez, not just for the allegations that were brought against him, but also for his past homophobic and divisive comments that no doubt have affected residents of Montclair. When community members brought concerns about his troubled and abhorrent past, Mr. Lopez found support in the mayor and the city council. Mr. Lopez was emboldened by your silence and endorsement of his past to continue causing harm to the city of Montclair. The harm that Mr. Lopez has caused is a direct result of your own homophobic and divisive agendas that seek to hurt LGBTQ Montclair residents. The censure of Mr. Lopez is a step in the right direction. However, the mayor and city council owe the residents of Montclair an apology for not censuring Mr. Lopez for being a divisive figure in the city. The next one is Mr. Luis Nolasco, inland empire community member and proud queer individual. My comment tonight is to echo the community's call for a censure of Councilmember Lopez, not just for the current allegations, but also for his past homophobic comments. When community members brought concerns about his troubled past, Mr. Lopez found support in the mayor and city council. Mr. Lopez was emboldened by your silence and endorsement of his past to continue causing harm to the city of Montclair. That harm that Mr. Lopez has caused is a direct result of your own homophobic and divisive agendas that seek to hurt LGBTQ Montclair residents. The censure of Mr. Lopez is a step in the right direction. However, mayor and city council owe the residents of Montclair an apology for not censuring Mr. Lopez for being a divisive figure in the city. And then, one more. This one is Emily Nguyen. Although I did not support him, I was giving Ben Lopez a benefit of a doubt that his homophobic activism was just a thing of the past. Unfortunately, I gave him too much credit. His past is still present as he bullied two employees because of their orientation. He went as far as making sexual advances towards them and sending sexually explicit messages via email. It is not fair what these city employees have to go through. He said he would be fair to everyone regardless of their race, gender and orientation. That promise was broken. The city of Montclair deserves good leaders, not discriminatory predators. That's it.
Thank you. I want to say the following, that, and my comments will be short, but first of all, this city, the city council, myself, we condemn any form of harassment and discrimination among employees or members of the public. It's not tolerated here in the city of Montclair and that's always been the policy of the city of Montclair and continue to be the policy of the city of Montclair. Second of all, our responsibility, part of our responsibility to the city council is to protect our employees and of course, protect the city's assets from litigation. And obviously, we have taken steps regarding these allegations been made. And third of all, I will say the allegations made by the employees this city council takes very seriously. As the city council has met in a closed session with the investigator, I can say that we thoroughly asked her many questions in the hours that we spent with her and we heard where her conclusion was from the investigation. Based on that, I believe the next step should be now is we should move forward to the census hearing as was discussed earlier today through the process. And that that hearing should be at the next city council meeting, my colleagues agree with me. And that the hearing should include all the information that was presented by the city manager in his presentation or in his staff report. And that should also include the items, the very end regarding city committees and also travel and the the travel, the training, the other city reputation, committee assignments to be included in that, in the motion that I'll present today. And I want to say that this is a very difficult position to go through. I'm not happy about this in terms of, of the allegations made and having to go through this process and having to go through a census process. It's, again, we take this very seriously. And at, at the end of the day, our job here again is to protect the city and protect its employees. That's, you know, it's all five of us, and I don't say all four of us, it's all five of us. You elected a team and it's the job of the team to make sure the city is run effectively. And again, our employees and our citizens are protected from harassment and from discrimination. Again, our, today is, is to move this to the next meeting for the census hearing. And at that time, the city council will consider, if it wishes, to adopt a censure resolution. So I'm not sure if any of the councilmembers have any comments. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm, I know with absolute certainty that none of us wants to be here. This is an ugly place to be and we don't want to go through this. But yet, here we are. We don't really have a choice. Having heard the investigator's research, which included interviewing several people, including Mr. Lopez, and hearing that the investigator sustained those allegations, and having read the court documents that are available to the public, I believe there are reasons for, for censure. We, because we need to demonstrate as a body that, and we do not in any way condone Councilman Lopez's behavior. Moreover, we have a duty to ensure that all employees are protected from harassment in this city. And I will second the mayor's motion that we adopt a resolution to censure to be reviewed at the next meeting.
I haven't made the motion yet, but thank you.
If you didn't, I'll make that motion.
Any more, any more comments by city councilmembers? I don't see requests to speak to, to blank up. Mayor Pertermru. Go ahead, Bill.
I do not like harassment of any type. Whether it's bullying, whether it's sexual harassment, whether it's even what some may call in a workplace setting, oh, playful kidding. I, I don't like any of it. It's wrong. I have been, in my life, I was far much younger, been the subject of bullying and it's not nice. It is something that is difficult for an employee or any human being to deal with, much less have to report it. We were given information in closed session by an investigator. And the investigator sustained essentially what she believed to be the facts. Nonetheless, I have only heard, aside from two parties, two individuals. There are three involved in this. Two employees and one councilmember. I haven't heard from the third person yet. I don't know anything. I do believe we have a legal system. There's a legal system that must work. This is an issue that's going to be going to court. I agonize over this because I don't want to presuppose a case one way or the other. To take one action could infer that we're saying there's guilt. To take another action could say we're inferring there's no guilt at all. I believe that these are the types of situations that need to be handled through the judicial and legal process. That's what we are in America. It is difficult for me because I, we have members of the public who are saying they saw this on social media or that on social media. Well, number one, I don't do social media, period. I don't engage it, I don't read it, I don't even know how to start it. But we can't take what's been done on social media. We can only take the facts that are presented to us, whatever those facts may be. I do not believe that any elected official, period, should be the subject of any kind of controversy such as this. Again, I've only had one side of the, or heard one side or the, from information, I haven't talked to the employees, from the investigator about what two employees have said. I haven't heard from the third person involved in this. That's why I think if this is going to go forward, it needs to go forward in the court of law. I'll also say that in my many, many years on this council, I have never taken an employee to lunch, gone to the movies, gone shopping with them. I don't sit and gossip with them. That too is inappropriate. There is a line. And unfortunately, in the last maybe 10, 15 years, I've seen that line crossed more than I'd like to think it should be crossed. As councilmembers, we should not be, period, should not be engaging in taking employees to lunch, to breakfast, to the movies, to go shopping with them or doing anything of that sort. Yes, if they're stuck in the rain, okay, I have a car, I'll pick them up. But we need to also start looking at that behavior as well because it crosses a line. We're not here to be friends, we're here to be policy managers for a city. I've been agonizing over this to the point, my family's even said, "You're crying, what's the problem?" And I said, "I won't go into it right now. It's not important to you, it's important to me." I have a decision to make tonight. And that decision is going to have to be based in part on what I know. But I'm also a person that if I'm proven wrong, I will admit that I was proven wrong. I want to emphasize, though, to everybody that we have a judicial legal system. And we need to make absolutely certain that that system is done and that it is not colored any way by somebody's personal views or anything else. I, I'll get too emotional tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, thank you. To say that we've only heard one side of the story is completely inaccurate. We've heard from the employees in the exact same way that we've heard from Councilmember Lopez, which is through the investigator, who has conducted a thorough investigation, who has spoken on multiple occasions to Councilmember Lopez, who has determined through speaking with Councilmember Lopez that there were inconsistencies in his statements and reasons to believe that he was not telling the truth, reasons to believe that the employees were in fact credible. And we, as the council, we have an obligation to the employees, to members of a protected class, to believe them and to protect them. Now, I really, really appreciate the diligence and the time and the effort that our city manager and our city manager and our city attorney has put into the report, tonight's report, and, you know, I really think that we owe it not only to the employees that have been victimized, but to the employees that have not yet been victimized, that may be victimized if we do not speak up, and to possibly the employees that have been victimized that have not spoken up yet. I highly doubt that the investigator's conclusions will, or the investigator's facts, fact findings will be determined incorrect. You know, I could be wrong, but right now, what we have in front of us is findings from a neutral third party that we hired to run an investigation, and, you know, we had no input, no say into this investigator's investigations, and the investigator sustained, you know, found that the factual allegations did in fact occur and that the employees were credible. So I'm surprised that anybody can sit back here and say that we've only heard one side of the story. I don't think that's the case.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see no speakers at all. And I want to say this, this is not a manner of what I call being aggressive or politics or instigate. We, as the council, are taking this very seriously in a professional manner, in a manner that's, let me see, according to law, in a manner that employers will conduct if one of their employees were to misbehave. Doesn't mean when they misbehave, they're correct or they're wrong, but it's a manner or it's a process you go through. And that's what we're going through right now, is a process, and we'll have that process, again, at a meeting, at a hearing, at the next meeting. And I want to also say this, this is not personal. It's not personal towards Mr. Lopez, not personal to his family. Again, we have an obligation to protect our employees, we have an obligation to protect the city of Montclair. The voters of this community, the residents of this community expect the city council to act in a professional manner when it comes to dealing with personnel issues. And that's what we're doing here, is doing that in this format, because instead of being an employee, we're all elected officials, and this is how we go about it. So as I talked about earlier, I was going to make a motion. So the motion is three-pronged, I can find it here. So I think I'll make it all in one motion. So the first, the first part of the motion is to schedule a census hearing to consider a resolution at our next regular city council meeting, which is, do I have a date here? April the 4th? April the 4th? The second portion of this motion will be to, for staff to bring to the city council a draft resolution for our consideration, based upon the presentation and also the information in the staff report, and that includes the entire presentation as prepared by the city manager. And the third portion of the motion is to sustain the city manager's actions when it comes to the personnel actions that he took to protect the employees. And that's my motion. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Lopez, you wish to speak?
Question. A question to my colleague, Councilmember Martinez. Are you under the impression, you stated that the investigator spoke to me multiple times, is that correct?
May I freely answer that?
Well, you just stated it, so I want you to clarify whether it's to confirm your statement.
That is my impression, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So with that, let's have an electronic, Mr. Lopez, are you going to participate in the vote, or are you going to be recusing yourself? Just so Andrew knows how to set it up.
I will all participate.
Participate, okay. So there'll be five members participating, and all five members vote. And the vote is for yes, one abstain, Mr. Lopez, and we're done with that item. So, next I have communication. I know it's almost nine o'clock. I'm going to say the city attorney has got no communication, Mr. Starr has no communication, I have no communication. Any communications from council to my left? Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's officially spring, so it's time to clean out your garage and get rid of all that clutter, and bring it to the e-waste event on the 26th and 27th of this month, that's a Saturday and a Sunday, to the Montclair Chamber of Commerce. That address is 8880 Benson Avenue, Suite 110. It's a no-touch process. You put the stuff in your trunk of your car, you drive through, they'll take it out for you, you're on your way in five minutes or less. Get rid of your clutter, bring it to the e-waste event. That's all I have.
Thank you. And how about my right? Any communication my right this evening? Mr. Lopez, have communication?
I will just make one quick statement, and it has nothing to do with what's transpired here tonight. On Saturday last, I attended the memorial for Leah Dingman. Most of you may not know who Leah Dingman is. She is the sister of Chaffee College trustee Gary Ovet, and the sister-in-law of Chaffee High School trustee Sue Ovet. Mrs. Dingman died quite suddenly and unexpectedly, and so there was a very, very large gathering. I guess maybe 300 people showed up, and I know we all extend our sympathies to former supervisor Gary Ovet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I noticed the, at the last meeting, I brought up the signal light going westbound at Mona Vista and San Bernardino, that the left directional arrow was removed. Shortly after that last beating, I noticed that the light had been restored. I wanted to know what was the reason for that brief interim time that it was removed? What happened?
Well, it was probably simply related to the construction activity that's occurring. So Caltrans and SBCTA make adjustments. It's their area of responsibility. They don't necessarily notify us, but we did make contact with them, and I think if you'll notice on Central Avenue now, for example, the lanes that will take you onto the 10 freeway westbound specifically say that this lane is directing you to the I-10 westbound. Mona Vista Avenue, there are still some concerns. I heard what you expressed in the last couple of meetings. I've recognized the same issues there. If you do notice, the left turn pocket onto westbound 10 freeway does have yellow hash marks.
At Mona Vista or Central?
Mona Vista I'm talking about right now. So at Mona Vista, they do have yellow hash marks that will direct you to keep you making the left turn. Doesn't stop people from continuing to go straight. So we will try to continue to work with SBCTA and Caltrans to enhance the markings to make certain that it is more apparent. If that even includes putting up those pylons that keep you in that lane, then we'll have to look at doing that as well. And we'll continue to look at Central Avenue as well.
I appreciate that. I would be in favor of the pylons because we're, well, not we, not the city, but others are inviting a whole series of potential fender benders and accidents that are just going to be aggravating for some. It's unfortunate. I know me and my family have been, experienced some close misses and close hits. Sorry. Real briefly, just so those residents that know that may be driving tonight, and maybe they're coming home from work, or if family are watching, you can notify loved ones, but beginning tonight at 11:00 PM through 5:00 AM tomorrow morning, the 10 freeway both directions, eastbound and westbound, will be completely shut from Euclid to Holt. So the freeway will be shut from Euclid to Holt overnight into the early morning hours, so that no doubt will, with Euclid to Holt closed, maybe congestion on Central and Mona Vista off-ramps tonight and the morning will probably be a situation to deal with. So just please drive accordingly, come up with alternate plans should you need to be out to tonight. With that, Mr. Mayor, I believe I am done. I'll have more to say at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, and let's just think of those folks in Ukraine. Let's pray for them. We're a great country, the West is great, and we're going to defeat Russia, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you. Regent.